I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I am Mark Blair and superintendent for Ryle.
Mike Carroll is superintendent for Paul River.
I'm Rachel. Ashley Martin, treasurer.
I'm Al Carter, president of the school board.
Dan Paul is president of the school board member.
Al Paul, secretary of party of the school board member.
Becky Love so, party of the school board vice president.
Lynette Ives, party of the school board.
Marv Hoopall, party of the school board president.
Gus Schmidt, district administrator, party of the schools.
Denise Bank, heart, Camry Friesland.
Rita Romania, Camry Friesland, president.
Tim Raven, superintendent, Camry Friesland.
Kennedy, Lloyd Cooper, executive director of Ryle.
Sue Farrar, Ryle school board.
Doug Shepherd, Ryle school board treasurer.
Bob Haggenell, Ryle school board vice president.
Let's start right into our discussions. Certain sort of opportunities. Transportation, Mark.
Certainly. Over the past several months, and I say we, we superintendent have been meeting twelve weeks since midsummer. And we've been looking at different opportunities for our school district, school districts, to share and cooperate in different services. And one of the areas we talked about is transportation. Two of the districts currently share a transportation company, a surplus. And so we've been thinking about how we can maybe share services with these larger districts. But also, if there are other times when we are traveling to different places that, you know, maybe we could have plus at Paul River and save districts funds. So that's kind of where we have really started our thought is how can we start saving our revenue, our funds, if I still provide or can we opt to be a co-operative?
I think, add on to that, Tim Raven, superintendent, Camry Friesland. Having talked with both Gus and Mark, inquiries regarding our busing situation. I thought was interesting that last spring, Tim Smith approached us and asked if we would be interested in contracting theirs to his services for busing. So that automatically, I think stars were starting to line up as far as potential just conversations to start with. And one of the things I think Camry Friesland would be intrigued about with a potential transportation cooperative would be, first and foremost, we'd be able to serve our students, that's number one, adequate, as they need to be. And number two, that there could be some real cost savings. For us, they have an in-house program, we're doing a class in houses right now. And we compare that to what a cooperative agreement could look like. Picture this, the idea that gas is right now at 209, 210 roughly. And through a cooperative agreement, you start purchasing in bulk. And you are, you have an opportunity to really capture dollars at times in the market. And, you know, right now would be a good example, would it be a good time to capture some dollars? We know in the long run, that that can come to bite you or force you very well, but if I'm right, there's some potential there. So that's how Camry got into the discussion.
For context, Mr. Raymond, what are you presently doing, you're completely in-house and you're running as subsidiary, what is your context here?
Right now, great question, thank you Bob. Right now, we are 100% in-house. Our building grounds, historian is also our transportation director. And I always, I joke with him that I'm going to put out in his tombstone in Epcat, there'll be a picture of a bus in his boots sticking out from underneath. If he's not working on the buses, I don't know where he's at right now, especially this time of year. But, so we run pretty much totally in-house. Very rarely, every once in a while, we'll have to send out a house for a prepared, but he's pretty darn.
How many routes, like an estimate?
We right now run five routes. Average, I rode on one bus this year, rode them all last year. We average right around, I would say 25 to 30. But example, we have one route this year that's just set up because of middle school sports at this time of the year, they won't run as low as four kids, which was unpredictable. We didn't know that. But once the middle school sports are out, we're projecting 25.
I'm gonna, Gus Schmidt from Partyville. The other discussions we had as superintendents, we looked at the transportation issue was even sitting there and looking at, I know Ryle and us at times for music contests, music different things like that, we'll all work together. Was even looking and saying, okay, what about field trips? Lots of us go to the same locations and things like that. Could we even get to the point that we would coordinate field trips and be able to send full buses? Like the joint, you know, couple of school districts or two school districts on a bus, but could we do that jointly and be, again, it's looking at saving, it's looking at saving cost. Looking at saving money, trying to stretch our dollars as far as we, as we can, because we know that everything is, none of us, none of us, our districts have easy budgets on a yearly basis of trying to, trying to balance and go forward. So it's even taking it to that extra step, something to say, can we coordinate even some things, not only co-curriculars, extracurriculars, can we coordinate things during the, during the actual school day?
Makes a lot of sense. Doug Shepherd, Ryle. I know we do a lot of stuff with Partyville, we go to the National FAFA convention, I think we used to, we used to coordinate with Partyville, Fall River. We used to do, we used to do so much cooperation between Ryle and Fall River and, you know, co-curriculars and, and other things that saved us, did save both districts, I think, a few of our money. And I, somewhere along the line, we get to it, there is a valley down there of co-curriculars. I really would like to discuss the need for more shared co-curriculars. Whether it's with any of us or multiples. I think that's, that's small numbers of kids coming out for things that is, you're using fewer resources, you're not only more competitive, but you're also providing the kids with a better, better situation. And you're saving some money if you're doing it, if you're sending kids off someplace where there's some sports activity, athletics, whatever it is, like pool. Can I, can I also hear from, from Partyville? Could we go back to transportation for a second and could you talk a little bit about, or have you talked about, next steps? I think it's interesting to lay out ideas, but let's just take transportation as the example. What are our next steps in terms of this cooperation?
Carl, maybe, that's a great question, maybe before that, could we understand and ask what you're doing at Fall River? In-house system, just for context there too, and then add on to Carl's questions.
Sure. At Fall River, we're in the in-house program. In terms of opportunities, and this is Mike Carroll, district administrator. We run four regular routes. Again, all of our staff are hired under our, our district. In terms of what I had said, Fall River would maybe potentially be interested in, it would be the coordination of co-curriculars and or field trips, but not what I would call, you know, regular and or daily transportation services and or moving into a bus service. So our, our interest would be more limited than potentially some of the other businesses.
A completely in-house maintenance system for you to, some work.
Yeah, I, yeah, we send out what we need to, we do what we're able to.
I'm sorry, Hal.
No.
I'm sorry. I want to be premature, I want to stay on transportation, I get this impression of where everybody's talking about, we're here, talking about some things here, I'd like to know what next steps.
And I guess I would, you know, speak, and as I mentioned by board, I think part of this, part of this was as we met over the summer, as the superintendents met over the summer, was basically to put some ideas on the table. And part of our open wish tonight is, is to get feedback from, from the boards as to are these areas that, that you wish us to pursue? And start, and start working on trying to formulate specific ideas, specific things. Like on my board, if that was the go-ahead to do on behalf of Partyville, then I would come back and, and continue to report to my board as to progress we made. And if we have joint meetings, we can certainly do that, but, you know, I think part of this was, I think the discussion we had, my fellow colleagues, superintendents, please correct me if I'm wrong, but my impression was that we get some ideas out on the table and then see where, what the reaction is to those. So I bring a lot of time and effort into doing some things and not having a, you know, boards looking and saying, no, we're not interested in this. Getting a sort of a feel of where are, where are we at and what do we want to try to concentrate our, our efforts in. And also realizing, I think that as we, if we start some of this process, that we will, there may be other areas that suddenly, suddenly surface. I think, just to lay it on the table, I mean, when we had their meetings, this is, this is looking at, I mean, I don't want anyone sitting and thinking that, that we're looking and doing anything with any type of consolidation amongst the four. This is, the reality is, is that we're all in tight budgets and we all gotta try and do things to keep our districts going and keep our, our districts thriving in our communities. We're looking at all the ways, okay, we gotta start thinking outside the box, we're not getting a whole lot of help from anyone. And, and now we have to take a step further and how can we, how can we work together, save money and strengthen our own districts? And make sure that they will survive over the next five or 10 years and not become potential consolidation partners with someone. And so I think we just need to, you know, I, I felt strongly about that as I was meeting and, well, that's my board and I want, I would, I would want the rest of these people to understand, this is not, we're looking at trying to save our districts, not, and we think that working cooperatively, we can, each of us can strengthen our district by doing that.
Sue Farrar, how would you like us to give you that feedback? Would you like to just have the different board say, yes, please pursue transportation? I, I think everyone would like to move this along.
I think it's a good idea when we talk about coordinating, I keep on Partyville. When we're talking about coordinating, we're talking about music festivals and field trips and FAFA conventions and all that. They look at the FAFA convention, probably most schools already have that locked in for this year with their hotels and their transportation. But that doesn't mean that you could start the process early for the next year, the next couple of years. My, some of my questions would be was, if you do this coordination, would it be, some of you are in-house and some of us are contracting. How, what are some of the logistics that would, that would involve? And also, when we're looking at combining classes or programs to go on a field trip, what type of numbers would be we be looking at at moving children? Would these places that they're going be able to handle that many more children at one time that would be coming to travel? I mean, I think it would be great if we could save some costs that way, but just some of the logistics of it would be the only thing I question. Any way we could save money, I think is great.
I don't see any need to be adding staff to coordinate that, I think the assistant administration can do the coordination in each district logically, particularly on shared field trips. There's no website that you.
Actually, that already exists if we want to do that through our school, because we all are to our confidence in our school, have the ability to do some of those types of things. Some of the questions you guys bring up are great, valid questions and valid points, the things that again, we haven't dealt into yet, because basically what we're looking for is a green light to go forward. You know, and at that point, once, once we have a green light and really it's, we could say with transportation, or really it's with any of the areas that we have listed here on the sheet, once we know or have some direction from all of you as board members, that's when we get back to work and say, okay, well, they're, they're for transportation. You know, they're not interested in looking at health insurance and what have you. If you want to know why are those areas, then we want to go forward and then pursue those. And I would just echo what Gus said earlier, is my, my sales pitch, when I sell back to the board, when I sell the feeling is, this is an opportunity for our district to be able to offer more programs and or better quality programs than we currently have, while still maintaining our own identity and still really having the ownership of us as a different, we have that same struggle community feel, but we have partnerships and ties to our neighbors. We, we have to help one another, we have to be willing to help one another. I think, I think we already do some of that when talks to staff and I know you and my prior districts that I've been a part of, you know, when it comes to positions. Somebody's hiring, say, a Spanish teacher, we'll plow out, fight to each other and say, hey, do you know anyone who's good at Spanish, or do you have any available MPD to be a share? So we're not, we've already started some of those types of partnerships, basically this is what, would you like to formalize some of those things up?
If I could, real quick, I'm sorry Bob. I, I think also tonight, you know, this is, this is an opportunity for the boards to first meet each other. The superintendents, we've been, since I would say August 3rd, I think it was our first meeting, we've probably gotten together about three or four times. And, and tonight, I think is much more of a wide net of areas. I, I'm very hesitant to talk about minutia. Example, I'm gonna stay with transportation for a second. Right now, we're scheduled to be exactly in the same spot that we are next year in what we're doing. But if there are opportunities, we're much more, and I don't want to over-speak, but I think we're in our exploration state, we want to listen and hear, if there are other things that could complement to the transportation, when we start talking about co and curricular activities. That's how, I think, because you have infrastructure built, first with the transportation, but we're not even there yet. And, and, you know, the question is, you know, when I go back to my board, I certainly am looking forward to hearing their voices tonight. Is this something that we want to speak about in, in very specifics at our next board meetings? Because as you said Becky, this is something that really isn't for this year, but it would be for next year, perhaps even the year after. I think that sort of judicious approach will serve us all very well.
Marv, from Partyville? I think that, that, I personally, and I feel that our board is very much definitely for this. I think the list is just beginning, that as, you know, as we would work through this, more and more things could get added to it. We were, you know, we were thinking about bus routes and we were thinking of field trips and now tonight, music and some other things have been added to it. And you think about all the things that our schools do, I see as our biggest challenge, communication. And that's something that I think needs to definitely be laid out so that we don't let things slip through the cracks and then it becomes a negative. And we don't want this to fail, we want to be able to work with the other school districts, as you said, to maintain your, we want to maintain our identities. This isn't any move whatsoever to try to consolidate anybody. We're already sharing things, we're in the, what was it, there's your quad wrestling program with Ryle and Camry. Hey, it works fine, saves us money, saves you money. And I think we're just, just keep building on this and transportation has to be huge. I, I watch some of the things where we look at, I helped with volleyball. I see a 72-passenger bus with 20 kids in it and I go, oh, you know, what's, what's this doing? And look at us trying to use the smaller vehicles when we've got a smaller team going somewhere, costs us half the money. Sometimes our teams go the same places for these quads and for these tournaments. All of us are gonna be up at Jang and Wisconsin Dells. We're all coming from this area. So it's, I just think it's a lot of opportunity that we really need to tap into and just continue with that.
I just would say too, again, Bob, from Ryle, Doug Taylor, you're reinforcing Mr. Knit, it's always gonna be Mr. Knit for me because he was a former teacher.
Sure, age me a lot.
Well, you're just running out of school, right?
Our context here at Ryle, and so everybody knows, is we were very fortunate to present and pass by a pretty wide margin this spring, a referendum to raise the levy tax. And as part of our message as a board and staff going out, it was always, well, it's just been recommended here, we really are looking to preserve the identity of our school, as it sounds like everybody else is, but we made a commitment and a, and a promise in that message to be doing exactly this, exploring what we can do together in the new reality, the reality, it's a new, it is a reality that we're all facing. And hence, again, the charge went out for our superintendents to meet. And this, we have some vested, our members of the community that are in on the referendum messaging and all that. And this really is the culmination or the first step of really fulfilling a promise that we kind of made. And our community, I think overwhelmingly supported via the referendum vote that want identity, but as a board, we really appreciate and want you to be exploring whatever makes sense. And I think looking at these six items here, we'd be remiss tonight to, I think I hear all the reports yet, but to not be at least looking at every possible way and exploring everything. And I know from my perspective, and I think I can speak at the half of our board, from what we've heard here tonight, it's a big green light to explore transportation.
So we would be happy to be here tonight saying, yes, continue on this item or prioritize these six that, you know, in terms of, that would be the goal for where we're headed tonight? Well, I think too, that it would be important for the superintendents there to continue to be, that they can decide what specific areas that we can begin to dovetail some of the transportation issues. It just makes common sense.
And even as we had our discussions, there is even some items on that we discussed since and then we've put together, that we are already talking about trying to do such a calendar and common dovetail things, I guess, so we can tie some things together. And that's how, we, we, our discussion is probably as far beyond, I believe, what I'm arguing. Is it a vote then, specifically, you four superintendents are cannot vote for? An unanimous vote or at least majority vote on these items?
I think part of it is when we, you know, as we posted our agenda, Partyville, we have to be careful because we posted we would be here at a meeting. I, I mean, I think part of it is, is we get some feel and maybe what we need to do is each of us needs to go back to our own board.
But you want, I mean, is there consensus then?
Yes. I mean, I, you know, I think we can tell by the conversation, we can tell by the conversation what, what's, what people are, what people are not.
My plan is, I'm sorry, Carroll. My, my plan, I believe all of our plans really is to bring this back as an agenda item with each of our respective boards and say, you know, we have this discussion on Wednesday, September 28th, looking for direction and or approval for which of the following, who, 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 who. You know, we each get our own green lights with our board and we're in our board meeting, it becomes public for our communities that way. You know, so really just the positive feedback, well, positive motivation, but whatever, whatever feedback we get here is what we're looking for tonight.
I would think that the superintendents know their boards well enough that just in the animated conversation that's gonna go around the room tonight, hopefully you'll have a good idea of who's, who stands where and what you, what you need to pursue.
Is there anyone else?
Keith Miller, Fall River, the, how would you manage, here's the things that the superintendents should try to figure out, I guess, how, thanks for the board. How do you manage the, do you get early release for inclined weather or something like that? Sharing his assets or whatever? And then how do you divide the cost of the field trip that they're all trying to design in place if there's twelve students in one school, twelve four, or another? Is that something you should use for the size of the back or is it one trip? That's a good question to get to, that's what we get to figure out. But I mean, for me and I to decision, that would be the answer.
Well, and again, I think, I think we could have situations also, that we go, that we go forward, that we, so the superintendents, we come up with some ideas, we come back to our board and our board says, no, this one isn't, isn't gonna fly the way it is. We can't, we can't endorse that. And we've all, we've all made our agreement that we understand that not all four of us will necessarily be in lockstep on, on each and every item. And some of us may look and say, there, here are some things that we can do, here are some things that we, that we can't do. And we may look, and we may get to the point of looking and saying, okay, and even in regards to transportation. It might be a very, it might be a very small, well, we think it could, could be a bigger window, it might be a smaller window by the time we get done with. I mean, the logistics are all those things, and again, I think each board has to go back and say, once we try to work out logistics, the superintendent can come back and say, here's what we have, can you support that or can't you support that? And if you can't, maybe we come back and see if we can modify things or we, or we just face the reality, okay, this issue isn't one that we can co-op with. Or maybe it comes to the fact that, because I'm at one end and Fall River's at the other end, we look and say, okay, you know what, we can only co-op with one district on this issue, on, on a certain issue. You know, you may look and say, I can only co-op, you know, on this issue, I can only co-op with one other district, I can't, I can't deal with all four. I mean, those are all things that still have to be worked out and ironed out. I mean, I don't think anyone should walk out of here thinking that it's gonna be all four doing everything that's on the list, but that may not be feasible and realistic. Likewise, you know, it could be a combination. Some, some we might be able to do all four, some we might only, you know, it might only be two, some there might be three that can, can work together. It's, it's, again, the bottom line is we're looking at saying, is there, is there a way by trying to finally get a meeting of the four of us together, is there a way that each of us could save some, some, you know, some money?
How like, where it's going, topic meet? Health insurance. There is a topic of the day. Here are some notes from a number of the meetings that we've had as superintendents and in the discussion of health insurance. And I want to, real quick, say that exactly what Gus said before from the beginning, we've never looked and said, this is gonna be a four and O, four and O, four and O, that's transportation, health insurance. It could be just Ryle and CF on one and Fall River and Ryle on another, twice, you know. And that's the way, that's the difference between consolidation and cooperative agreement, which I really think we need to identify. So, anyway, this is something that, I'm not gonna lie to you, as starting from my interview at Camry Friesland is something I brought to the table because I've seen it be successful for other school districts, meeting the healthcare needs of their staff while at the same time saving school districts significant dollars. I'm gonna ask Mike to jump in, he's got similar experiences in his background. This was, we started up when I was on a little island, about five miles off the tip of Door County. And there I was with 64 students, 11 staff members, and I was part of a ninth school district cooperative, larger school being Luxembourg Casper. And we were at, we were And we were at, we were a voting partner, we had as equal of a vote as Luxembourg Casco and whatnot. And in the first year of our insurance cooperative, we moved from WA Trust to another group and our school district saved seventy-eight thousand dollars in that one year. Last year was the first year since the inception, I want to say two thousand twelve, thirteen, that the cooperatives' insurance rates rose by, had a raise and an increase. It was the first year and it rose by one percent. So in four years, they held at or below their rate and they had their first increase in four years at one percent. So there are fiscal advantages to taking a look at a cooperative and there's the thing right there, you need to have partners at dance. And, and geographically as well as where cooperatives have gone, we actually have, the districts here represent a potential for a very strong cooperative. On that second page is the agenda that we've worked with going into our meeting with M3. There are a lot of brokers in the state, we have AFG, we have M3, there are several others, but AFG and M3 are the two big ones. M3 was the one that coordinated the entire cooperative of it, in the Door Kiwanee Cooperative with those nine schools, and I believe they're now at ten. And because of those connections and then also Mike and his connections and his previous school district worked with M3 in, in that conference, and he'll speak to that, I'm sure, in a minute. So anyway, we brought in some of the folks from, from M3, some of their senior execs and what have you, and they put us through presentations stating what is a cooperative and why are the advantages, things we're talking about. Myths of a cooperative, things that we need to get off the table. Example, let's say we were to put together a cooperative and Fall River says, you know what, we don't want to be offering those three tiers that are in this program, you don't have to, you want to go with just the one, you can. Ryo says, we, we would rather go with the program where we offer family and individual, no one plus one, you can. In other words, you get a lot of autonomy within the agreements. And there are myths out there that say that, that, that doesn't happen, it's just not true. You might say, well, why would we want to go into a cooperative rather than a, I'm trying to think of the name, consortium, consortium. A cooperative is a legal entity that, that you are bound to, and there are restrictions because of what the advantages. Typically, a cooperative you're in for three years. If you get out early, there's a penalty, things that districts would have to think about. The boards would have their, their, superintendents typically are at the head of the cooperative as far as the voting board, but there isn't a superintendent that's going to vote the provisions of their board. So that works pretty well. Throughout that, this process, what you really started doing, it happened up in the Door Kiwanee is, not only did we come together as far as insurance, but we were coming together on other issues. Second year into it, we had a four-day seminar at, excuse me, three-day seminar at Door, Southern Door School District, where four of the schools in the Door County came together, but our all relationships began through the insurance. So again, creating those infrastructures that create other things. Anyway, a consortium is different, it is not a legal entity, you can come and go as you please. There was a reason why in two thousand twelve, when the nine schools were, went out to bid, they only got two offers. I'm thinking, what in the world's going on? This is a fifteen-hundred member group, they should have at minimum five. Well, lo and behold, on the strength, a consortium is not considered a legal entity and insurance groups look and say, well, you know, we can go in on this and your school district could pull out just because, but we're still wrapped into the deal that we agreed on. So, you know, there are some legal differences and there are, there are binding differences when you move to a cooperative. I, I think, you know, at, at the end of the day, we've met at CISA Five and CISA Five also M3 presented discussing about this. And we're certainly just seeing because of the volatility, volatility of the health insurance market, the idea of the more members you have, the more souls you have or belly buttons, as the insurance people put it, the more leverage you have. That's just all there is to it. We were denied even a discussion of an HRA this year because we were considered too small. That bothered me because HRAs can really come up to a great advantage for your staff if you do it right, as well as a financial advantage for your districts. So anyway, that was kind of the history and the superintendents here at the tables were foolish enough to say, well, we'll take that exploration with you. So that's kind of how we landed here today.
I'll keep Mike's real sort this week, but I, I have also been a part of a health cooperative, we're moving into a health cooperative with another district as well, similar experience. We wound up saving in the first year about four thousand dollars per family plan. The biggest thing to actually know about that, and I'm not saying that that means that that's the kind of saving we're going to be willing to be on knowing that. But the biggest fears that I think staff and the board have is switching health insurance or the idea of switching health insurance is a scary one. When, when we moved into our cooperative situation, my last district, we didn't actually have to change our plan. That was, that was the big thing about it. Like Tim had said earlier, if you wanted to have flexibility within your plan and we wanted something different than a lot of the schools in the cooperative did, we weren't able to do that. It was just that basically we had a larger buying power. Each of us are small districts and we even had someone else who was at our table back in August, who would say, well, you know, my, my health is running great, I don't know if I'm going to do that. The, the problem with being in a small district is even if your health risk ratio is running very, very well, it only takes two or three, you know, or even potentially one staff member to flip, and now your, your risk ratio is all of a sudden running differently. The more people that you draw into that plan, the more that levels out. Certainly, yes, you may, you know, if, if Fall River jumps in, we may assume a little bit of risk by taping on, you know, Cambridge may not be running as well as us right now. Now you're changing any time with the overall grouping is, is what helps get that weight for us. In terms of stabilization of weight, the other thing, you know, Tim's was a, is a three-year lock, we had a two-year lock to revisit, with a two-year re-lock, and it gave us a year to basically above quads, which was also nice. We didn't experience quite the same one Tim did, but they said they're going to have no more than a six percent raise at a time when we're seeing nine, you know, fourteen percent raises, we wound up having a three percent raise, which still compared to the other districts who weren't part of those cooperatives or ours, you know, we were doing quite well. So again, to me, the biggest thing in making a cooperative work, and the district that I was in was fairly volatile with their life's health insurance change, and I worked with three from them three. And when, when we had that discussion, she's like, oh my gosh, Mike, you're going to take this on here, so let's, let's do it. But it actually went really, really well primarily because of education and communication. So if there's anything that's going to make something work, it is truly getting staff to know and understand what it means and what the process would look like. It's not just jumping in going, well, here's what we're doing. But educating and saying, you know, what are the things, like for example, we sent out a, a health survey, what were the things that our staff valued, were looking for in their plan, wanted to maintain in their current plan? And we used that as a guideline for moving forward. And like I said, we were actually able to maintain basically identically, identical of what our previous plan was. Staff didn't notice a change other than the rate change.
Can I ask, how many schools were in it and how many numbers were it sure?
How many, how many staff members?
Yeah, how many?
Yeah, we were just over the fifty mark. It was a small district. And again, you know, with what's come down the pipe here with meeting, they have at least fifty, and now they're talking about bumping that up to a hundred, it's all the more reading for us to look at. So each of us, right now, we're, we're, with our rec staff, we're seventy-five to eighty regular staff, we have forty-four winged teachers. And so, you know, we're over that fifty threshold, each of you, I think, is right over that fifty threshold as well, but, but we're not that far above.
You're a large one.
We're, we're over a hundred.
Yeah, you're a lot, yeah, you're a large one, but like I said, you ended that move to a hundred, you, you're able to maintain it and that's something that you and your board, you know, has to discuss and say, well, this is an advantage for us to be at. I mean, I've been a part of a district ten times the size of Fall River prior as well. And, and even there, we didn't jump into a cooperative there, but there could still be advantages of jumping onto another school to be a part of that.
Mike really hit something big, I, I just got, I think it's so important. With, when you run into a situation like this in a cooperative, you work with three at M3 and I worked with Cindy Van Aston, I go from being an insurance agent throughout, throughout the school year. A lot of that gets taken off my desk, it gets taken off my business manager's desk because M3 brokers and treats, you know, in my experience, our broker treated us as if we were the only school in the cooperative, but they did that with the entire group. And being a superintendent, we've got so much, you know, with every generation of schools, there's so much on the table, but we have moved away from being educators and, and dealing with education, we've become, find, uh, insurance brokers. The power of, you know, through these discussions, Cindy Van Aston's been at, at our side and working with us. And we had a situation this year, our initial increase last year was approximately nineteen percent in our insurances, even though we were running below cost, our, our, our expenditure was below the premium. What in the world is up with that? And our insurance carrier said, well, you know, we're comparing it to the national average. I don't care about the national average compared to us. And Cindy became involved and then we, we went out to bid, which is something we haven't done in, in a year or two. And we went from nineteen percent down to, I think it was four point two five percent when we signed. And there were times I looked and I said, Cindy, here, what do you want to do, Tim? This is what I think. Am I in the right ballpark? Absolutely. And then she would go. And that was nice. That was, it allowed me then to focus on other things. So anyways, just want to share that.
How many of us are with M3? Three of us at least, are you?
No, not at all.
Okay, no. So you're the only one of four that's not involved with M3?
Yeah, it was very close.
Just to be clear, Tim, if I'm hearing you right, the discussion has been for a formal cooperative because that is binding, we look at that a lot more favorable than a consortium, correct?
When, when the Door Kiwanee went from a consortium to a cooperative, they had two bids, they went from two to five, and you get, and much more competitive. And then the negotiating.
Because of their recognition of that, that there's going to be binding and they have a sure, much more sure thing than a, in a consortium.
Yep.
Is it necessary that the school districts have joined, really joined one another in Miami?
No.
That they're in an area, or almost join us if they chose this or other school? So it could get rager and further if it were one carrier.
Door Kiwanee, all of a sudden, there's a big skip and you go from Algoma to Denver. And I think it was, I think it was Michigan who just joined in, so, I mean, there's a pretty good separation there, but, and it was actually through the CISA that the, the superintendents began the conversations, too.
And we really begun the process of looking at this law.
Yes.
Our staff has filled out insurance. Do you benefit from that survey?
Pleasant, pleasant survey.
Shh. So we've already made, made that commitment to at least look at moving forward.
They'll take the information from the survey, come back and say, yes, it's a really good idea that you and here's why. And they're basically going back to what Mike was talking about, do you have any major health issues? This one was a little bit intrusive. How many times have you switched carriers and they come in and ask you three questions? You know, do you have heart issues, do you have cancer? I mean, but this was a little bit more in-depth, but, you know, just to continue the exploration on a reasonable timeframe.
Gus, I need to sit down and work with you on your survey. We do it afterwards.
I'll just be quiet, Mike, regretting our feet a little on this end. We're not, you know, because we've been advised that because we have over a hundred, we have some negotiating power. We saw that, we saw that this past year when we had Dean and they bonded a sixteen percent rate hike and our software went out and started bidding and, and we ended up with Unicity where we got, our premium this year is now ten percent lower than it was a year ago because we were over a hundred and sometimes insurance companies want to buy, wants, want to buy clients. I mean, there was, quite honestly to tell you, there's no justification for, based on our premiums, there was no justification for that cut. But they wanted, Unicity wanted to buy our business, but we had that luxury because we were over a hundred people in our plan.
Wouldn't preclude the three of us pursuing that.
Oh, yeah, I mean, you know, we talked about this earlier, here's, here's an example of where maybe three will go together. That doesn't mean that down the road, we might not come back and approach, or we, and certainly if we fell below a hundred, I mean, I think we're at one oh five or one oh seven or something like that, we're not that far above. We've got to make some budget cuts along the way, we're going to be, we're going to be down there and then we certainly would be back into the game of saying, you know, what, we want to, you know, this now becomes in our better interest. We're still, you know, we're, we're still investigating where we want to, I'm still investigating where I want to be. I haven't said absolutely no, I won't, but I, I'm not, I'm not as far as, as we are in, in, you know, recommending my board that we would, that we would move forward yet on this. But again, I think that just proves again where, where we're at in, on, on each issue.
Is it going to ask everybody's board or superintendents, are all of you on an HMO style program that is in Madison-based, be it Dean, Unity, or E-plus, or somebody quite a bit different? WA Trust, WA Trust, but HMO-based where maintenance, so more service, not maintenance?
Unity, service.
Service.
Unity, this, this service.
Service, not a maintenance, HMO.
Not, not, no, no, I mean, we, we have in that, you know, network and our network. Everybody has an option to go to, who they want to, basically pay more if they, this is our network.
That's okay.
Yeah. Great.
Next on the agenda, it's the GED.
Twenty million have been running the last few years, GED two, option two, program with alternative education classes for students to get through. Obviously, there's, as the superintendents met, that became, that's so attractive to my colleagues about that. I would tell you that where we're at right now, as in talking my GED teacher and things like that, state has some specific guidelines about the fact that, that, you know, certain percentage of people have to pass, otherwise you lose your program there. And so I think, and I told my superintendents, we need to sit down with everybody, we need to take a look and, and we'd have to, if we allow others in, you know, open this up for others to join us, we got to take a look at some, some guidelines and some specific things to make sure that, you know, part of the thing in a GED program is, is that our, that our teacher has been working with these students prior to their entrance to the program. You know, as they, but, you know, they don't fall behind right away in, you know, in one day. They don't have to look at that one day, so, you know, in our district, he's been able to use that working with them when they're freshmen, sophomores and stuff like that, when they're starting to fall behind. So he's built up a relationship with them and, and we believe that that's part of the reason that the program has been so successful, we've gotten, you know, people through that. Part of that is now as we look at guidelines and things like that, is okay, how, how might we build that relationship if we're getting people in from other, from other districts? Be able to make sure that was going to be successful. Most, most of the district, you know, most of her, those who are sending them to us, you're just sending them to us expecting that your students are going to get their, you know, pass through the program and also making sure that, that we're able, that continue the program because we got that, that success ratio there. So we're working on that this semester and my, you know, what I've told the fellow superintendents is that we would certainly hopefully be ready to roll something out December, January, you know, take a look, my board take a look at that and, and, you know, the target we'd right now would be if we could be ready to do something second semester.
I'll, I'll throw Mike's assessment on this one just because back, although all the way back to two thousand and four, I started a, a G O two program with a small district and it's still placed now, obviously, in a much larger district, so we had our own program in-house. And then we actually hired a person to run that program, where we had a population where on average, we had classes somewhere between a hundred and fifty and two hundred kids. And we were running, I'll say, six to seven kids through that program each year on average. You know, Fall River, to, to change things, you know, we have one or two kids that meet the needs from a current efficiency standpoint where they may be looking at G O two being a good option. I mean, we wrote a pretty, I'll say, a pretty rigorous entrance, it wasn't, well, your current efficiency now we're going to dump you here, it was you have to earn your way in with regard to attendance. in with regard to attendance, with regard to progress, and we monitored that very closely. You know, if it doesn't work out with Partyville, I know that there's a hesitancy there, for good reason, you know, then I think our other school districts may have the opportunity and say, well, you know, three of us together may want to look at forming our own G O two program. You know, when I was teacher administrator in Milton, we had an alternative school with three schools, it was called Magnus, and there we ran a G O two program through our alternative school. And now we're talking, that's a district of thirty-five hundred kids, high school of over a thousand kids, and my school, and they had two other schools going into it as well. We made it work, but it was really about, one, forming those relationships, two, having a good screening process for those kids, and holding them accountable, I can, I can see within my own district, if they weren't eating those programs, we actually pulled them back out of the program, and we said, okay, nobody gave you those choices, you gave this option, you're not falling to weight, so we're going to either fit you in regular classroom again, or we're going to, you know, we're going to come up with other options. Right now, in Fall River, and I, you know, to be perfectly honest, don't know the situation for the other districts, we have to look at, like, Kettle Marine Park, and it costs a district in Harrell Lake to do so, we get charged quite a bit. Years back, it used to be organized by CTS, if you guys ever heard that, Dane County Transportation School, which went under a couple of years back, but I mean, we were talking twenty thousand dollars a kid, plus transportation. You can almost run your own G O program for you, and run multiple kids through. So, you know, again, you know, if it rolls out with Partyville fantastic, if it doesn't go along with Partyville, I think, at least on our behalf of the company, that we're probably going to want to pursue with other districts.
Mike, do you want to talk about the effects for school districts that have a G O, GED two option program, and those that allow students just to go through St. Mary Park, H S E D program, and how that comes to graduation?
Yeah, sure. I mean, one of the big things, if a kid graduates from, or completes from Kettle Marine Park, in Fall River, they don't earn a Fall River diploma, they earn an H S E D. Now, in terms of what they do in that H S E D, can they go out to the most secondary? Absolutely. No, but it's important for, at least I would say for our kids, I know we've had that conversation, kids have gone to our school for a number of years, they want to get that Fall River diploma. The G E D option two program allows them still to achieve a Fall River school district diploma because it's an in-house program, even if you form a cooperative, you can still each have your own school's diplomas as a part of completion through that program.
And being such a small school, if you have a child who earns H S E D, that, that does compare different to a district diploma that takes you on the state report card, and the smaller you are in population, that, that one or two students can make a difference.
For us here at Ryle, we really don't have any other opportunity other than M A T C. M A T C's not active for us anymore, because now we have to, it's not that's, and we used to use it for, you know, evidence. So we, you know, we really are looking at some type of program where we can put our kids, you know, if our credentialing has, has a successful, you know, high school diploma. So, I know we would be really interested to do that direction.
Gus, how many kids in Partyville a year would be taking advantage of this program?
We have two, maybe three a year.
Three?
See, I think the success ratio, I mean, like, considering my teachers, the success ratio's got to be eighty percent. You know, and so, you know, and I accept, but I think if we, you know, we're going to sit down and talk about criteria and do some things, and if we get, you know, you know, we're certainly going to take a look at it, and understand it's an issue we do have, and it's like, okay, if we could, if we could be able to offer it without, you know, again, with some assurance that we, that we felt we could get your students from other districts through it without jeopardizing the program, you know, we certainly would be, we certainly would be very open to that. We just got to start having a little discussion, that's where we're at.
And is it green light, do you want to discuss it?
Ryle, each year we look at the graduation rate, and it just doesn't count for the graduation present, and you're like, as good a school as you, even if your graduation rate isn't up there, it really is a deterrent, and so we're thinking about how we might get the GEDs to come, to work, and also cut the cost.
Anyone else? Okay, go on. Let's see if you're good.
That's what, where we thought we could really start saving some money, just trying to find some way to, we all buy supplies, we buy paper, we buy paper, we buy any, you know, we're trying, and what's the best way to get the best prices, to, again, cooperate on it. So we've been talking about, where are some ways we can do that? And, I mean, one thing we talked about is paper, you know, and I think some of us already buy whole variety, I think all, we, we all, yeah, so we think that, you know, that would be a good way to start looking at how can we save money on paper as a, as a beginning, and then looking at school supplies, things like that, as we evolve.
CISA as a service for the school?
There's a statewide program, CISA purchasing, run out of CISA two in White Water, and every, every school is eligible to participate.
What kinds of things are involved in that?
Never mind, I, I can get you more information.
So part of the things are covered?
Right, right. And I think one of the, one of the things we talked about is, to have, as we move forward, one of the things the superintendents have all discussed is that it'd be a good idea to bring to the table, example, we'd have a meeting and invite our business managers, to have a meeting and invite our building grounds, so those folks can talk, because, you know, we fly at thirty thousand feet, and, and we think we know when to do shit times, and most of the times we do, but I'll tell you what, Brad Young knows my, my building needs and supplies a heck of a lot better than I do, and I have the feeling he'd be talking the same language as the folks representing the industry, so we would love to expand this conversation to get people to be at the table there.
For context, is it fair to assume all, so three of you have your own food department? It's almost true, you know, contract out your food service, is that fair?
Kind of along with what Doug was talking about, you know, this is one of the areas that we really like to see if we're, especially at Ryle, if we could probably get some shared program, and some, some shared cooperative, sort of, there. I know in, in our district, we don't have any opportunity for advanced placement, and, you know, we have some places that we'd like to make a guest placement course, so that might be an area where we would like to see if we could cooperate with, you know, the district to help provide that opportunity for our kids, because they don't have. You know, we've talked about athletic programs, you know, Doug was talking about, is it, is it time for us to start looking at doing more shared, more cooperative programs, and you'll get a flyer, and wrestling, and, you know, a successful cooperative for us? So is it time to, you know, start looking where we can, again, get a, a shared, a shared program, save money, also make it better for our kids? So I know destiny hardboarders, we will, as we put out, at, 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 we talked about, okay, where are, where are some ways that we can maybe share some, some services from other districts? And, and so, we really, from our, our district perspective, this is really, this is very important to us.
We would, I mean, we, Partyville, we, six or seven years ago, Random and Sumaret, we don't have a Random and Sumaret, we can't offer that to our students. We certainly would be interested in, in being able to offer, offer that. We have some AP, we, you know, we could cooperate with that, we, you know, like the other districts that, you know, don't have, you know, programs or whatever, I think a part of that is, again, gets to this point of, can we do some of these things? And then does that help on, on staffing funds, where, where we might be, you know, and do we, if we don't have the numbers, we end up making some cutting or stuff like that, well, can we share districts in the, you know, you have some quality people in some, in some good areas that the numbers might not be as, you know, as large, and, well, if we could start sharing, that might be able to allow us to keep some good people and, and offer services back and, back and forth there. You know, regards to that, we have had, you know, obviously, one of the issues with that is schedule, and we have, we've already, as superintendents, had some discussion about the fact of having a joint calendar, that we, all four of us would have the same calendar, so that there wouldn't, you know, there wouldn't be these days, okay, I got vacation, my student is not in school this day, now, now that, that screws up a joint, a joint shared class. And even got to the point of looking and saying, okay, maybe we take, that, that closer book of, of joint bell schedules, and say, okay, we're running the same, the same schedule. My experience was, my experience was way back to when I first started, back in the fall of nineteen seventy-nine, I was in Reedsville District, had a cooperative with Brilliant and Hillbird, which were tech ed, was auto mechanics and things like that. We called those kids the Brilliant Boys, they went to Brilliant, that was the midpoint, and they went first and second hour. The only, the only modification we had to make to their schedules is we had to make sure they had a third hour spending hall, because they would be coming back, but, but those three schools went together and offered, and offered classes back in nineteen seventy-nine for areas that we could offer as, as individuals. It worked out the transportation amongst us, it, you know, it all worked out, and that program was going, at least when I left, eighty-seven, I don't know if it's still going today or not, but, but that program, you know, and though, that's what I, you know, from my experience, that's what I'm looking at, and saying, okay, maybe we do that, maybe we have to make some modifications, that maybe some of this cooperative would be at the beginning of the day, or the end of the day for our school district, so it wouldn't disrupt schedules as much, but maybe, maybe it's something like that that we, that we do. Maybe, again, like I said, we've already had a discussion about, you know, one of the key factors, this would be a joint, you know, similar calendars, similar bell schedule, stuff like that, to do that, to be able to make that, make that work better.
Um, Ashley from Fall River, I just have a question, if you guys are thinking that that would be like kids moving, staff moving, digital learning, like what kind of thing you're talking about, shared programming, what does that look like?
I think it would look like all of that, really. And, you know, I think it might be a hard for, you know, for a kid in Partyville to go to Fall River, or if you go to where you might become a, you know, a part of that, where I know back in the day, I got to do this, Partyville and Ryle, we cooperated on a number of courses.
Four periods a day, we had buses running back and forth between Ryle and Partyville, total shared curriculum for those four periods, and a lot of you will remember that as well. It worked, and we had four year, okay, quite our time schedules to allow for that busing between those removing kids. We made it work for many years, and then gradually, both of us decided to divest, but we served a lot of kids for a lot of years that way. With our learning that's available today, now, we could, you know, with Skype, you could do a lot of stuff that way, if it's one kid dealing with another teacher in another district, I can see where Skype would be used perhaps, or something like that. It's more difficult, I think, when we move, we move kids from building to building, because you not only have the worry of time schedule, you have the worry of transportation time and loss of learning mother on that bus, so I think.
She touched on Skype.
Pardon me.
She touched on Skype.
Yeah.
Moved to Skype.
Yeah. Yes, we, that we could do.
When we, when I was in high school, Randolph and Comerio shared, and it, we did a ten-minute time slot, you know, where the ten-minute bell rang, you got on a bus, and the buses met halfway, and, and obviously, they crossed paths and stopped. But that, that worked very well, the proximity was great for them. There were classes, though, where the teacher would come and teach a whole class in Comerio, so.
It fixed it when I was in high school, basically.
We shared drivers app for years, and the teacher is the one who, I had a math class where the teacher came over, so it really depended on where was the rider among the students, and then the teacher would move for that, so.
Some of the learning that we've been looking at came out of the state convention last year, which was you can set up whole classrooms where the teacher can see a classroom here, you can see a classroom there, completely interactive with the class, every class is interactive, you know? We've been wanting to make a field trip down to the junior area, that's where they're currently doing that, and that would make a lot of sense, if you have very small classes of academic subjects to share, and nobody got to do any of the stuff to them.
Let us ask, how many GED classes are you offering to other schools? So Fall River is a campus.
We have five.
Five?
We have also a camp class as well.
It's a camp class?
Basically, it's in our community or in the country.
Does Fall River still share with Columbus on AP stuff? Not anymore?
And then three years back, we actually shared in the A teacher with Columbus, who finally ended up hiring her full time, so now we don't have anything on her, but that sure involves, she went to Columbus in the morning and often at the end.
And to get to your point yesterday, you know, about the all three opportunities, you know, I have experience with the distance learning lab, which is what you're referencing before, I guess, you know, like, one of my teachers, for example, taught physics to three different school districts via distance learning, so I have thirty, some grand dollars available to help out with some of the costs of implementing such a thing within your school or your district. You know, where, where we're looking at it, I would say, at least through my lens, is more so than the travel of students, which I still think having the common calendar, hopefully, I'll say, similar bell schedule comes into play, the ability to have a distance learning opportunity and/or potential shared staff, and, you know, and it brings up A, you know, A is a program where if there's a need, where we don't have any offerings for our kids right now, it's in that area.
In terms of dual credit courses, what are the offerings?
Ours are business app.
Business app?
And if you're talking AP.
I'm going to start on dual credit.
Dual credit classes, we think this is a.
Ours is, I would say, Spanish only, which is a, a Muslim.
Spanish.
And we don't have it.
I, I think what Mike hits on is, I'm going to go to something, folks, having been in, there's a, it's becoming more and more true to the core, but if you are, if you have internet access, you find your most remote areas are some of your most high-tech people. You see them in the, in the Alaskan outback, you see, we actually have that in Washington Island. The, the, I, I think the interactive distance learning, you know, is, can be very effective. At the end of the day, though, there is nothing better than a live teacher. I, you are, you are losing something, and I'm going to say, God darn it, because of the past so many years with, I mean, how many of you are saying, tired of saying it's not within our budget? And sometimes you're like, I just said that about pencils. Not to be too outlandish, but we have compromised ourselves so much, and I look and say that I think what you brought up, had to be asked, you know, what, it could be anything you want, schedules can be manipulated, they're easy to, they are really easy to manipulate and create a, still a, a very good learning environment. But I would absolutely encourage to keep going down this road because the more, it's just terrible when you hear that Partyville doesn't have these, and we're barely holding onto it, but I'm glad we are, and, you know, we don't have, your FFA, we share with Randolph, you know, so we're fortunate there, but we don't have woods, metals, a lot of the computer, the CTE programs, and our kids getting, leaving our, our school district, they're, they're well-equipped, but just like you, your kids are, are, compared to our neighbors in the DeForest, and the Sun Prairie, and what have you, they have greater, they have greater skills and advantages because of the opportunities. So I would highly encourage you to keep going down this road, please.
Are there any others that you could, you know, do?
No, this is, this is as far as we were able to brainstorm and said, okay, this is probably enough information to bring to our boards, to let them chew on and digest. But again, I think it, and I heard some tonight already, I think there are, if we start down this road, I think there may be ideas that, that people think about and say, why couldn't we do this, that we haven't even, you know, that we as administrators haven't even thought about. I mean, I think it, it opens up, I mean, but again, part of this is. But again, I think it, and I've heard some tonight already, I think there are, uh, if we start down this road, I think there may be ideas that, that people think about and say, why couldn't we do this? That we haven't even, you know, that we as a ministers haven't even thought about. I mean, I think it, it opens up, I mean, but again, part of this is, is I look at it as, we have to start thinking outside the box if we're gonna survive as individual school districts. We're gonna start thinking about some of these creative things, because we aren't gonna survive if we just keep doing what we've been doing. Unless there's something dramatically that changes, and I don't think it is, because this issue is not, is not unique to Wisconsin as much as you think it is, it is, you know, lots of other states are having these same issues and same, uh, concerns and stuff. So again, I think it's something that, at least it's, it's a, it's a starting point. Are there a lot of logistics that have to be worked out? Yeah, there are still a lot of, you know, this is just a starting point, we're, you know, we're just starting this race, and this doesn't mean that we're anywhere near completion. And, and I understand as much as I would hope it would not occur, but it might all fall apart. We might get to that point and say, we can't work out the logistics on things. I'm, but I'm hoping that my board and other boards that are here will at least give us more the opportunity to say, okay, can you try to work out logistics? Can you try to do something? Let's give this a shot and see what happens. Because maybe, maybe all this whole thing, maybe there's one or two things that we could do. Hopefully, there's more than that, but maybe there's, there's, there's things that we could do to try to, uh, you know, you know, save some resources so that we can put them in other areas that we know that we need to put them in.
Or to other areas not even on this list, in the seventh.
I just want to thank you for, for your work. I, I think that you presented us with some very challenging and interesting ideas, and I hope you'll continue, because this was very, very nice.
I just want to say, when we hired, uh, Mr. Raymond, one of his, one of the lines that really intrigued me in, in his, um, application papers were, was the information that he brought forward with the co-op up in, uh, in York County, and, um, that was something that once he was hired, that became kind of a focus for us. Not only because I thought that was an outside-the-box kind of idea for one thing, and thought that we could save a lot of money. I mean, we all know what our line items are for our, um, health insurance, they make us pause. Um, but the fact that he, that he has that ability to look, and, and develop something like this with all of you guys, I, we all want to keep our schools, we know how important it is to our communities. This is our lifeblood, every place you go, when it's Pingo, when it's your Rob Bash, when it's, you know, and that's not the education. Plus, those are the future of the people that we're going to be, that are gonna take care of us. That, you know, they're gonna be your doctor and your home care nurse, and, and calling your driveways when we can't anymore. And I think if we can keep our community's school districts strong, these are, these are wonderful ideas. And I think what you do, you know, even in the beginning, we were talking about transportation. We talked about, well, how are you gonna figure out, um, what, what field trips? Well, that's, that's an email away. You, you start connecting three third-grade teachers or four third-grade teacher groups, that'll take care of itself in a half an hour. But then those twelve teachers talk to each other, they're gonna come up with ideas. And the more we work together, the, this list may get longer, and it might not be big-ticket items all the time like transportation and health insurance, but it might be. And, and to be able to say, you know, it would be really cool if we could share this teacher, or something that none of us have ever had, astronomy, or, because we do things like that here. And my kid, my daughter's, um, friend goes to, what is it, Paul's? What, what?
What, what?
The things that child thinks in, in high school are amazing, maybe we can do that.
Well, the other thing is, we hear in Partonville, uh, we have more kids going open and open out than are coming open and open in, and one of the things we hear is that they have more, especially because they're going to Portage, they have more opportunities than what they have here. I look and say, if we can do some things jointly and save some money and, and enhance programs for students within our own district by utilizing my neighbors, uh, to help me do that, not only will I save some, not only will I save some money, but I'll save some money in open enrollment. Because, because kids will not, and, and if we do this and could make this attractive, we might even start, each of us might even start to see some other people want to come into our districts, because they're looking and saying, look at all the, look at, I mean, that's the dream. That's the ultimate dream and ultimate goal, we, we got a ways to get there, but I'm looking at saying to myself that that's the ultimate vision, I'm saying, you know, can I save some money that way? Could I even additionally maybe make some money, because people would look and say, this is really neat, what's going on? I go to Partonville, but I can take advantage of some other opportunities that, that Partonville is working with other districts on.
I think too, an area that I would add to the list is staffed around. I think that it can be contagious to put across teachers from the same grade level, from different districts. It's also an excellent bargaining chip if you're trying to bring in expertise. And I just think it's one that maybe could be added to the list, the potential. Something we struggle with locally with small group, and there's some excellent presenters and evaluators out there that could be utilized in a group of size.
I didn't, I'm sorry, you hit something so big that when we brought our school districts together at the door, individually, we could not have brought in, but we brought in an international speaker who just lit it up, guided us, and sent us off in the next couple of days. And we would not have been able to do that individually, but we were able to pull resources, and that's such a big thing.
Can I just throw another idea, this is just really just, but, I mean, we keep hearing that, um, the businesses in our community are saying that our kids aren't, they are, they, we're not producing kids that are beneficial to them in their, their positions. One of the things that I keep thinking about is how are we gonna get our kids to have the skills that these businesses say that these kids need? And I think, you know, how great we have some, you know, great businesses in different, these different communities. And if we did kind of pull together and had some ideas of how some businesses maybe could help us create some classes or some trainings that might really appease them, because then they're kind of producing kids that, that they could use, and that keeps them in the community, and, you know.
I'm not gonna speak to it, but just, Tim has to choose his word on this one, we're doing it.
Gus and I are looking at each other kind of written like Cheshire Cats over here. We last, about a summer, two summers ago, just started up this thing called the Camry Freezing Career Coalition. And we found out Partonville had something real similar. We just connected with them, and Gus and, and his principal at the time helped us formulate. We have right now between thirty and forty businesses, and we've brought the businesses and the school together. Our goal is to many-fold, one day when, when one of our students graduate, we hope that when they come back, they've had experiences in our community, whether it's at the Research and Development Lab at Didion, or with the floor manager at Also. And they realize there's career opportunities in our school district, that they come back home. As well as being attractive, and believe it or not, Robbins Baby Factory is in our coalition, because, um, Travis just kind of heard about it, and we went on a tour with Jan Fooey, longtime teacher, she was the one that was being referenced before about sharing forty years ago, but thirty years ago with, with schools with Randolph, I'm sorry. And we went through, we went through ramp routes. She had stopped three times because former students helped her. And all three lived in Camry, and I thought, that's when I realized, holy cow, we're much closer. And I was so glad that, that they were living in Camry, but yet they had a career in Fall River, so to your point. And, um, uh, we leaned, we leaned a lot on Partonville, and, uh, this November, we're doing a membership drive, and we're expected to, you know, expand beyond forty, uh, businesses. They're coming into our school, we're sending out more kids than ever, and it's really taking off. So I think you've really just hit so much, that Gus enjoyed that during.
Yeah, I mean, and, and part of this, or the discussions we've had with businesses, local industries and things like that, is not only on how we can prepare students and working with that, but they have made the comment, I've had local industries make the comment to me about the fact that, that they share one thing with small school districts. We bring in people, they teach for us for a while, they take off and go somewhere else because they can make more money. Well, guess what? Businesses in our town, the industries in our town are having the same problem. They did work this year because of what, we didn't mean to hire that many, but I've already started having discussions with businesses, we've said, okay, when you hire a teacher and they have a spouse, call us, let us know what their skill is, because we, maybe we can try to, to hire them, and then maybe, you know, we can build a community from, from within. I mean, you know, it's, not only can we prepare students for them, but now can we also help back and forth with the, with the workforce, because obviously, the, the industries in our community is, you know, whatever size they are, we don't, we don't survive, those industries back up and leave, because that's the tax base that provides us, you know. So I think it's, it's a, it's a joint, you know, even a, even a larger, yes, we need to prepare students for them, we need to prepare a workforce for them, but there's other things that we could be jointly doing together with them, and helping to, you know, maintain and, and grow our communities. And that, that isn't necessarily a population, but just, these communities, make them, make our communities viable.
And, and to that point, and something I, I thought of when Rita and I were at, in January, meeting at, at Didion. We, we had a good number of people there in the twelve-three, and that night was one of the first nights the businesses talked to us as a school, it was a dialogue. And, and, um, one of, one of the things that businesses really started to talk to us about is exactly what you said, is the soft skills. And then how interesting that coincided with our, beginning of our exploration of grading and assessment, measurement, and all of that. And we're right in the middle of that this year, and digging back into the research as a curriculum coordinator as well at, at Camry, the research out there on, on how report cards are now grading the soft skills, but very different than what we did in the past. And it is exactly the skills that, that Didion is looking for, that Robbins are looking for, that our manufacturers are looking for. The thing is, they're not tying them to the math grade. In other words, we're not gonna use your attendance or your participation as leverage for your grade in math. You're gonna be graded on your academics there. But part of the graduation requirements require successful through the soft skills, the looking in each other's eyes that initiates the interviews. Isn't that something, how business and schools are coming together, and this sort of matter? So to your, to your, that question, that is absolutely happening, and those are the things that can grow through a group of test.
I would figure that, I have two microbrews in the environment, that I was only a C-plus student my whole time in high school. I got some of the highest SAT test scores in town, and it's from that school, and it was all the curriculums that they had. Chris Webber, Trump, we had Feldman, we had, uh, cats, butcher, uh, drawing, and all those things that were needed. Right now, the army is not taking me, right, we got a power ice, so we need to get you in. And then there's always the talk that the army is stuck in the army, and that's from there. Well, there's only, right now, the males twenty-three to, or seventeen to twenty-one that are eligible for military service, or twenty-three percent, who has population right there. So we're dealing with current, and at the first start, when I get in, they're so unprepared for life, for their own marriage, so we've got a lot of work yet to do, on making sure that we produce self-aligned, self-sufficient sense in this whole country, on all those elements, right? The trades do play a role, making sure we're, we got that license for that.
Are there any recommendations to proceed? Everyone seems happy, all pretty together, can we continue, maybe four times a year, maybe like this? Maybe in November, February, May, something like that? And the administrators, maybe every month, or whatever, have the, have they been doing?
Yeah, well, I would say the nice thing is that, uh, through the CSU pack structure, um, we actually are planning on that monthly piece, because we already have a meeting where we're coming together once a month, and so basically, we're, we're kind of creating a working lunch right after the meeting, to be able to continue our discussion in that area, so, so that part of it's happening. You know, in terms of frequency of full board, uh, you know, certainly that's something that we'll probably each have to take back to our own boards, and get to be able to think that. You know, my, my perception is that, that each of the groups here has a continued interest in moving forward in some capacity. Uh, you know, at what speed, uh, you know, certainly that's what we're gonna have to determine with our groups and then have a report back.
Is there anybody? Can I just say one thing? I would like to really thank, first and foremost, Mark, and his leadership in this, uh, really has just been outstanding. Thank you so much, and, uh, the Ryle Board for giving the conversation and hosting us tonight, and, um, thank you. It was really outstanding.